Okay, it is now seven o'clock and we're gonna go ahead and start our city council meeting for November 18th. Can I have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Present.
Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Felix.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I want to welcome everybody here. It's really nice to see this many people here. No matter what you're here for, we want to hear from you, so thank you for coming tonight. For those of you who don't know, you can always get our agendas. They're done the Friday before our Monday city council meetings. So please feel free to go to our website and find those items so that if there's things that you're interested in, please, look at that agenda. I'm gonna start off tonight, I'm gonna show you a video that I think some of you are gonna be a little disappointed in our residents when you see this video. This is a video... Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped stuff. I went, I didn't do the invocation. And actually, the pastor's not here tonight, so Aldwin Bolton's going to do the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. The pastor that was assigned tonight just notified me he had a family emergency. They're waiting for the paramedics to arrive, so I am spontaneous, he's gonna render the invocation. Father God, we thank you for the, first of all, we come with the spirit of Thanksgiving because this is the opportunity that in our land, you have blessed us and you have given to us just overflowing blessings. So, Lord, we thank you for this council, we thank you for this city, we thank you for life, we thank you, God, for forgiveness. And, Lord, we, before we petition anything, we ask that you give us the wisdom and discretion to rule and the affairs of this city with wisdom, more wisdom and more understanding. And, Lord, we thank you for giving us the application of knowledge that we might understand as imperfect people that sometime we have to make perfect decisions. So we thank you for giving us the spirit of accomplishment. And we thank you for the privilege to serve this community and live in peace. Bless every division of this city, every operation, everyone that serves. In Jesus' name, we thank you, God. Amen.
I think I was so excited to show you this video. I've never forgotten to do our invocation or our pledge, so I apologize. Can we show the video by chance? So this video that you're going to see was taken at Station Three of our fire stations. I want you to see how people drive and how they react that makes us concerned. This is our fire truck backing up on Lewis. Look at this car that goes around and goes down the sidewalk, which is right by a school. If you are willing to put our firefighters, now remember, there's often a firefighter that stands behind that truck to help it back in. If you are doing that and driving down a sidewalk by a school, imagine what people are like on the streets when they don't think people are watching them. So I wanted you to be aware of this and know that this is happening. And imagine this is what happens in our neighborhoods. This is Station Three, which is a residential neighborhood. So it's right off of Lewis. I just wanted everybody to see it. I'd love to tell you, this was the first and only time it happened. It is not. This happens on a regular basis at Station Three and other stations as well. So I just wanted you to be aware of it. At this time, I'm going to call Police Chief Navarro up here to update you on items at the police, the calls that they respond to and different cases. So thank you, Chief Navarro.
You're welcome, ma'am. Hello, City Council and members of the Waukegan community. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the stats that we have for the month of October. Some of these stats aren't complete, especially our citations are not up to date. We're a bit behind on them. But as far as for calls for service, and I'm gonna compare the month of, the entire month of October 2024 to the month of October in 2023, so you get, you get an idea of where we're at. In 2023, we had about 5,262 calls for service that month. For 2024, we're at 4,994, a difference of about 268 calls less for service for the police department. We've issued 585 citations for the month. Last year, we were at 729, but keep in mind that we are not up to date. We are behind on entering all the citations into our system. Our local ordinances and parking citations, we issued 2,098. Last year, we issued 2,665. We had 146 adult arrests. Last year, we had, at this time, 243. We had five juvenile arrests for the month of October. Last year, we had 12. We seized 13 firearms. Last year, we were at 18 firearms. I also want to talk a bit about, we've had, within the last 30 days, we've had three fatal crashes involving pedestrians. One occurred on October 12th at Grandin Butrick. We had a second one that occurred on October 22nd at Grandin, New York, and a third one that occurred on November 1st at Belvedere and Fulton. Obviously, each one of those crashes involved a vehicle and a pedestrian. And, you know, obviously, it's terrible. We're, we've added resources and extended our traffic enforcement on Grand Avenue since then. Through the special detail, we've issued 31 citations, and we're most involving speeding, and we're doing the same thing on Belvedere and on Washington. What we're asking the community is to please prioritize your safety and wear reflective clothing during low light conditions and during the evening hours. The brighter clothing, obviously, will make it easier for the drivers to see you. We're also continuing our extra high visibility enforcement to include speeding and impaired driving now through the new year. We're able to use funding from the Illinois Highway Safety Grant Step Program. So hopefully, we'll be able to take some of these, cite some of these dangers drivers that are on the road. Thank you so much for your time.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
What was the category for the, I got the numbers, 2,098 and 2,265 and...
That's correct, for the local ordinances, for, which, which is the alternate parking and city stickers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Next, I'd like to bring up Nicole from Animal Control. For those of you who have not met her, she is in charge of our animal control. And they've had a very, very busy season.
Yes, we did. I am so happy to be here tonight, Council, to give you some stats. I know this is the very first time that we were able to even share this information. I have October's intakes for animals, just to give you guys a, an idea of what we deal with for just a single month. Remind you, during this month, we only had three employees at Animal Control. In that one month, we had 222 animal calls. Fifteen out of those animal calls were dog bites. Those can range from something minor to dog versus dog, to some very serious ones where animals have been dead, and then also to humans. During that month, we had 50 animals come in. We only had seven go home to owners. The rest of them ended up going into rescue, thankfully, to our wonderful team, but that is a very staggering number to go back to owners. In the other last three months, that was for August, September, and October, we had 148 animals come into our facility. That is a lot of animals for three employees to take care of. Our team did fantastic taking care of those. We really are stressing to citizens right now to get their animals microchipped. We did offer, between October and November, we had a shot clinic. We were able to provide over 400 free microchips and parvo shots to the citizens to help distemper and parvo, and then to also help these dogs and cats get back home. We really are stressing. We do offer microchip to the citizens. If you guys have pets, please call us, set up an appointment. We want to get these animals back home. It has been nonstop for us, and the tremendous support that we have been receiving is huge. The new facility is just, we couldn't have been happier with that. It has changed not just our lives every day going into a building that we can feel comfortable in, but for the animals that we have as well that are staying with us. I do stress that for some of the new councils, and since this is the first time, please don't hesitate to call us. Ask what we do, what we can help with, what we can assist with. There are so many more programs out there that I don't think a lot of citizens know even exist to help them with their animals, on top of everything that we can also assist with. It's same for you guys in each ward. And I thank you for letting us talk.
Thank you. You will be seeing her once a month. Next council meeting, you'll be hearing from the fire department, and we will also be having the building department and probably public work speak as well, just so the residents know what's going on in your city and some of the things that we're dealing with. We have been bombarded this whole summer with almost a maximum of the, our shelter being full. So again, we tell people, and we mean this, we only take in Waukegan animals because we could not take in the whole county, but people call from all, all over, and if you don't know how well our animal control runs, you should see the calls and the compassion that they give our residents each and every day. Just some general remarks. I'm excited to announce that our holiday kickoff will be Saturday, November 30th. The Waukegan Park District will be hosting Winter Hot Chocolate Walk as part of the Go Waukegan Series. For those of you who don't know what that is, that's where we basically have you walk through the city. It's to get you outdoors, to get you exercise, but they will have, like I said, a hot chocolate walk. The group will meet at the Jack Benny Plaza from four to five, and then the tree lighting will be at the plaza at 5:00. We're also collaborating with the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce Partners, who will have hot chocolate and treats for everyone. And also stop by the Waukegan Public Library between 3:00 and 8:00. There's a Kris Kringle Artist Market where Santa will visit from 6:30 to 7:30 and bring your camera to take photos. November 30th. In partnership with the Lake County and CMAP, the City of Waukegan is developing a safety action plan for the Safety Travel for All Initiative. So this is working with Lake County, basically the equivalent of the Department of Transportation, developing a safety action plan to look at specific challenges and practical solutions to improve safety for all our roadway users in the community. So we'll be looking at different intersections, that kind of thing, what, what we think needs to be done to help them. Some areas we know based on crashes, but some are just things that we would like your input on to see, hey, there may not be a lot of crashes here, but this is a dangerous intersection. So that will happen. There'll be an open house here at City Hall in the council chambers this Thursday, November 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Like I said, the data only gives us part of the picture. It does not give us the whole picture, so we just really want your input. There'll be some light food served here, and again, please come and give us your input. We definitely want to hear from you. We've been keeping everyone updated on our Trees Forever Grant Program, and it's a pleasure to announce that we've finally started to do all the planting. Thanks to your support and participation, we are significantly improving Waukegan's green spaces. As many of you know, we cut down a lot of ash trees a lo, a long time ago. We are now trying to replenish some of our trees, and we're asking for you to work with us. When you see some of these trees, if they're by you, if you can water them and help us out in taking care of these trees, please help us. And I, I want to say that if you have questions about this, please contact our grant writer, Nicole Large, at, it's nicole.large@waukeganil.gov. She can answer any questions for you. Our annual Veterans Drive is in full swing, and there's two boxes down in the lobby for the Cool Pantry. The Cool Pantry collects toiletries, cleaning supplies, and personal care items for our veterans. So please think of all of those who have served, and if you can donate things, please take the opportunity to. And again, when you leave this evening, you'll see the boxes down there. Please stop by and put things in those boxes for them. At this time, I want to ask if they can put a picture up of our city sticker for next year. City stickers will go on sale in February, and I'm gonna show you what it is. It is our piping plovers. So this is the first time that we've actually, there you go, you can see it. I think this is the first time we've actually had a city sticker so colorful, which hopefully will make it easier for people to see whether a city sticker, whether you have one or not. But this advertises our piping plover, so I'm really happy about that. Leaf collection is still going on. What you'll see in some of our neighborhoods is with this rain, and again, on Wednesday, we're supposed to possibly get some flurries. They're probably going to be a bit behind. Stay with us, we're working on it. We plan on having all this done, and what they don't get to, we will send our trucks out and make sure that this is all done. Again, you can also put things in bags with stickers up to December 15th. There's something new this year, and this week starts the week called Servolution, where our faith-based organizations are coordinating a week of service in the community. It started today at First Baptist Church at 5:00 PM, where community volunteers are painting, cleaning, and organizing the space. On Tuesday, November 19th, tomorrow, begins at 3:00 PM, where it's called a community care package in sharing time with the homeless. Wednesday, November 20th, at 11:00 AM, young trees in the community will be planted. On Thursday, November 21st, at 11:00, there's a neighborhood cleanup. On Friday, November 22nd, at 6:00 PM, generosity feeds. This is a program that we are going to be doing on Saturday, but we were doing the setup on Friday night, but the actual generosity feeds, which is packing 10,000 meals for Waukegan kids. So if any of you are interested in volunteering, they still need more volunteers, you can call, or you can email www.servewaukegan.com. And this is the first time our faith-based community has done something like this. I think they did it years ago, but we're back doing it, so please, volunteer your time if you can. Lastly, next Thursday is Thanksgiving. I want to wish all our residents, elected officials, and dedicated city staff a very blessed holidays, and thanks to, and to be given to their families and friends and loved ones. I also want to remind everybody that not only is City Hall closed on Thanksgiving, but we're closed on the Friday right after. So please mark your calendars accordingly. We don't want people to make trips that no one is gonna be here for. So that's all I have, Madam Clerk. Back to you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a resolution that we need to have a motion on.
Can I have a first and a second for, I'm sorry, Alderman Martinez, second? Can I get a second? Alderman Newsom. This is 24-R-292 declaring the City of Waukegan a member of Cities of Service. And can I have our Cities of Service people come up? Darren, for those of you who don't know, this is Cheryl and Andy Mini, who are heading this up, and they're gonna tell us a little bit about what Cities of Service is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and fellow Waukegan residents. I'm Cheryl Mini, this is my husband, Antonio Mini. Hi. We are the liaisons for the City of Services. And for our great city declaration, we will be part of a national nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting mayors in designing and implementing high-impact service strategies. We're excited to show how our program can benefit the City of Waukegan. City of Services focuses on impact volunteering, a strategy that involves targeting and community needs, using best practices and setting clear outcomes and measures to gauge process. Imagine a Waukegan where residents are empowered to make a difference. The environment is protected to thrive. Cities of Services will help us achieve the mayor and council's progress, progression vision. I invite you all to join us in creating a more vibrant, equitable, sustainable Waukegan. Together, we can build a community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. As we have accepted this responsibility, I look forward to working with the government, Mental Affairs Officer Darren and Thomas, and Chief of Staff George Frizes, and the mayor and council to continue the success we are experiencing. Thank you.
So for those of you who don't know what City of Service is, it's a national-wide organization, but what it does is it concentrates on volunteering in the community. So we have a lot of people who say, I'd love to volunteer for something, but they don't know in what capacity they can do that. This is who you will contact about this, and it's putting groups together to do things like, you know, we have the city signs as you enter the, the area that say, Welcome to Waukegan. We need people to help maintain those. There's a lot of different places that we are looking for volunteers for. We are looking for volunteers to maybe work on painting an area or something like that, but people don't know how they can do that. So this is what this group is about. They, like I said, this is part of a, a national organization, but it's something that we are putting forward in Waukegan to help put volunteers connecting together. So do we have the resolution that you'd like to read, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do. Would you like it now or after the vote?
Let's go ahead and do the vote first. We've got the first and the second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed. Resolution Number 24-R-292. Whereas the City of Waukegan is committed to fostering a strong, vibrant, and inclusive community, and whereas volunteerism is a powerful force that strengthens communities and improves the lives of residents, and whereas the Cities of Service Initiative provides a framework for cities to harness the power of volunteerism to address critical local needs. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, to hereby proclaim Waukegan as a member of the Cities of Service. We pledge to mobilize volunteers by actively recruit and engage volunteers to address community challenges. Create impactful opportunities by developing high-impact volunteer opportunities that align with the city's priorities. Measure and evaluate to track and measure the impact of volunteer efforts to inform future initiatives. Collaborate with partners. Partner with community organizations, businesses, and other stakeholders to maximize the impact of volunteerism. By joining the Cities of Service, we commit to building a more resilient and compassionate community. We encourage all residents to participate in volunteer activities and make a positive difference in our city. Adopted this 18th day of November, 2024.
Thank you. I'd like to have them come up. Darren, also come up, because I want there to be a picture on our website so that they know who they are and you can all call them, and you, you're very aware of them. Again, this is something that we're introducing to try and get people involved in our community, and they have been so gracious as to volunteer to head this up. Yeah, we might need you to... Here we go. One, five, guys. Ready? One, two, three.
Time? Yes, ma'am. We'll have audience time. I'm gonna call you up in groups of five. Go ahead and proceed to the east side of the room and line up so you're ready to go. You each have three minutes. I'm gonna give you the first five. Tom Kapine, Debbie Grove, Steve Hill, Todd Johnson, Rebecca Stevens. That's Tom Kapine, Debbie Grove, Steve Hill, Todd Johnson, and Rebecca Stevens. I'm ready to go when you are, sir.
Okay, I'm Tom Kapine. I'm from 122 Washington Street, the Kapine Studio. Earlier in the meetings this mor, I talked to you about the sculpture that was proposed for consideration that consists of just letters. The councilmen have already heard this, but I think the people here need to know this too. The original art grant was over $400,000, and an allotment of $125,000 was put aside for a sculpture that represented the city. They call it an identity sculpture. That, I was on the committee, the original committee that started this. In those discussions, we talked about the broad range of things that could be done to enhance Waukegan and the arts that are here. Fourteen people, as I understand, entered a competition for that identity sculpture. All fourteen were rejected. We later found out that they wanted just letters, but the grant itself did not, was not specifically that, and it still isn't. There are those who say it is, but it's not. What was proposed, which you might have seen, is some letters that simply are spelling out WKGN, or wa, it didn't even spell out Waukegan, and they're willing to spend $100,000 on that. I think this is something that all of you should understand. It's not in connection with the original intent of that grant. That grant is designed to create real art for the city. It's specifically for downtown, and it specifically says "art." This was a, this later was just changed around, so it became this rather innocuous idea. Problem I think the city has is we really don't have people in position to make decisions about art. And I later, in the second meeting, proposed that we create a council, an actual group of people involving all the arts, that the city can go to and say, here, we're not gonna get caught flat-footed this time. We're not gonna paint streets and then have to paint your road. We're gonna have people who actually understand art, who are in the theater, who are in visual arts, who are in music. What a great town this is. It's full of great artists. We need to focus this and make sure that money is spent by artists who are local, to, on artists who are local, because we do have the talent. And so that motion to create that thing was table for now, but we cannot let up because you never know where this thing will go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Debbie Grove? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Debbie Grove, and thanks for having me today. I've mostly come here to give you a gift. I'm from the DAR, which is Daughters of the American Revolution, and we're mostly about history preservation, education, and patriot... history preservation, education, and patriotism. Our chapter has been here for 100 years in Waukegan, and we were first called the Waukegan Chapter in 1978, I think it was. We changed it to Little Fort, because the word "Waukegan" means Little Fort in Potawatomi. So, and our first project that we did as a DAR chapter was to put a Blue Spruce Tree at City Hall. And what I have, I don't know how I'm going to give it to you. Who wants to be a volunteer? This flag, this flag right here was flown over Constitution Hall in Washington, D.C. on Flag Day. So I didn't know if I should just keep it in the box to protect it until you'd like to use it and stuff, and here is the plaque that goes with it. Oh my goodness, thank you. Sure. And also, speaking of Indians, it is National American Heritage Month this month, and if you'd like to, if you could read this over at your leisure, sign it or whatever, put it up someplace in-
In City Hall.
-in City Hall for the rest of this month, that would be great. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of all the all the members, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'm going to let you see it. What a wonderful year for the city. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak tonight. For those of you who I have not had the pleasure of meeting yet, my name's Steve Hill. I'm a Waukegan resident, and I'm a short-term rental owner and operator. Over the past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk to many owner-operators about the proposed ordinance. What I've discovered is that we all have a passion for providing our Navy families and other visitors with a comfortable, clean, affordable place in which they can come together as families to celebrate the achievements of their proud sons and daughters who have graduated from boot camp before they begin their journey to protect our country and the freedoms we all enjoy. Additionally, it gives each and every one of the owners great pleasure to be able to refer our guests to local establishments, to all the wonderful, many fine restaurants, bars, bakeries, grocery stores, and so on in Waukegan. As we've all heard before, the naval graduations bring approximately $45 million to the local area. If some of these ordinance requirements pass, many small business owners in Waukegan will suffer, not only short-term rental owners, but also local businesses who've come to rely on the referrals to their local businesses over the naval graduations. Our goal is to work with the city of Waukegan to create both equality and uniformity within the rental ordinances, which include both long-term and short-term rentals. We should not have substantially different criteria for the two rental types. Because this is new territory for the city, we suggest an ordinance that mirrors the existing one in place for long-term rentals and then build off of it as an understanding of the business takes place over the next several years. Let's not create a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. This will only tax existing manpower in City Hall where they are already working on overload. One proposed regulation in the short-term rental ordinance is location restriction. This restriction was included in the proposed ordinance to mirror that of group residential home ordinance, but the two living arrangements have nothing in common. A short-term rental property needs to be meticulously maintained in order to survive within the Airbnb and VRBO formats. These renovated homes increase the value of the surrounding real estate and bring wonderful Navy families to Waukegan. If the city is worried about short-term rentals changing the character of a neighborhood, they should change their focus to the many long-term rentals with absentee landlords that litter the neighborhoods throughout Waukegan. You have an opportunity to make Waukegan a city of progress by building a short-term ordinance that brings both business and uniformity to Waukegan. We hope you will vote to make Waukegan a city that is seen as business-friendly and progressive. In conclusion, Waukegan needs one homogeneous ordinance that serves all rental markets, as they are critical to the growth and prosperity of Waukegan and its residents. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Todd Johnson, and I reside in Waukegan. I'm coming to the council today to express my concerns about the proposed short-term rental ordinance. I've spent the last two weeks talking to neighbors, business owners in Waukegan, and other short-term rental hosts, and all have unanimously been against the proposed ordinance and the burdensome regulations. I have requested, but not received as of today, any data to support the claims from the New Sun article that quoted George Bridges, Chief of Staff for the mayor, when he stated, quote, "Short-term rentals have created some uncertainty with property owners," end quote. This whole ordinance came up extremely fast, with no public comment, was presented to the Community Development Committee for the first time, and on the council agenda for a final vote on the same night. This seems to have been created to satisfy a very small handful of residents' personal agendas. We need a government that has full transparency and the best interests of the entire community and nearly all of its 90,000 residents. I've done extensive research since the community meeting and on the proposed short-term rental ordinance, and to the contrary of what was told to us by city officials, there is no evidence of similar restrictions on any community that directly neighbors Waukegan. We did find out from staff that some municipalities that were looked at were Northbrook, Highland Park, Lake Forest, and Lake Bluff. I think anyone would agree that these communities are very different from Waukegan and not a representation where something like this should be modeled after. All communities directly next to Waukegan either have no ordinance on the short-term rentals or an ordinance that mirrors the same regulations for long-term rentals, something that I personally agree with. We should have an ordinance that mirrors long-term rentals. Libertyville, which did an extensive review of this in 2019, published publicly their full review for full transparency and decided not to have any restrictions on short-term rental ordinances other than a 5% occupancy tax that is collected by the reservation platforms like Airbnb and VRBO. In conclusion, Waukegan needs to live up to its tagline as a city of progress and not put these overreaching restrictions on short-term rentals that would jeopardize the ongoing improvement and beautification of our city and the substantial revenue to our local businesses and in turn, sales tax of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, ma'am.
I need a short-term rental and a house. I wanted to come tonight to publicly thank the neighborhood of Ash Street in Waukegan. The kindness that they showed, my husband and I, the information that they passed along about 2017 Ash Street really saved us from a big mistake. It was a house that we loved and that we almost bought, but we found water in the basement. The sellers did not want to negotiate anything. Coincidentally, there was a flurry of activity from people in the neighborhood, the people that lived next door to the house, the people who lived on Coalville and North Avenue, saying that they knew of issues with the plumbing, with the sewer. From there, we were able to do some more research and ask for some negotiation, which we were turned down. But the important thing is, wow, I wanted to move back to Waukegan, and we decided not to buy that house. But the people just really rallied, and it was, it was really wonderful to see that. And I was really pleased to see that people of Waukegan were kind and generous and open with information that they had to offer of a particular residence. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group will be Andrew Wegelin, Anne Lynn, Roberto Puig, Ms. Moore, Tracy Rash. Andrew Wegelin, Anne Lynn, Roberto Puig, Ms. Moore, Tracy Rash. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Alderman Newsom and Mayor Taylor. As of this October, I'm a proud new resident of the 5th Ward in the great city of Waukegan. Just for a little background, I commute several hundred miles for work, splitting about half of my time between here and there, and I'd like to be able to rent my residence as a short-term rental while I'm away for work or elsewhere. The ordinance as written doesn't make too much sense to me. It seems hasty and poorly written, and that's what I'd like to comment on tonight. First, there's the repealer, which is overly broad and nonspecific. Then getting into Section 141A definitions, a dwelling unit shall mean a building designed or used exclusively for residential occupancy, whereas a short-term rental, as used in this chapter, shall mean a dwelling unit for overnight accommodation. But as soon as you use it for overnight accommodation, it's no longer exclusively being used as a residential occupancy, and so one definition seems to me to cancel out the other, and due to the repealer, they're both stricken from the ordinance. Moving on to Section 14-4, this regards all owners who, housing property including properties of two units or less. Owners who reside in their own licensed building shall not be required to pay a unit fee for the unit in which they reside, nor shall the unit in which the owner resides be subject to inspection. However, this does appear to me to contradict Section 20-78B regarding the rights of the responsibility which actually reterms in all of Article 4, short-term rentals as hotel motels. So my residence, as soon as I rent it as a short-term rental, then becomes retermed as a hotel motel under Article 4, at which point the local tax administrators, I guess, allowed to inspect my resident, inspect and enter my residence whenever they wish. That to me seems to contradict the Fourth Amendment. Part B, license fee scheduled for said units on building basis as provided herein. Why single out single units from buildings if I can stack 20 short-term rentals on top of each other but can't place two adjacent to each other in separate residence? Seems like a contradiction to me. In part, Section 1443C, written notice must be delivered at least 30 days prior to desired issuance for a license and must include the rental registration number. I'm not certain how I would get a rental registration number 30 days to applying for a rental registration. That seems contradictory to me unless I've missed something. Payment of the non-refundable, Part D, payment of the non-refundable annual fee in the Mount South Fourth and Section-
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Anne Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Anne Lynn. I live at 915 North Sheridan Road in Waukegan, and I'm here tonight just to make a few comments about the proposed short-term rental licensing ordinance. I'm here as a neighbor of Todd Johnson and Steve Hill. They live just a couple of doors down from me, and I'm a close neighbor of their Airbnb homes, which are surrounding their own home. My husband Craig and I have lived in our home on Sheridan Road for 38 years, and we are here to say, or I am here to say, it's never been better. And a huge part of that is because these beautiful historic homes in our neighborhood are now being purchased, cared for, and preserved, and occupied like they never have been before. In fact, a number of these homes actually have been vacant for many years, and a real stressor for us in our community because we knew that they were vacant. Now they're not vacant. There have been absolutely no nuisances, loud parties, or any trouble since these homes have been used as short-term rental properties. I also have a little different perspective from others here, because I was an attorney for the city of Waukegan for 26 years, working mostly in planning, zoning, building, and code compliance. In that capacity, I wrote the rental licensing ordinance, which passed in 2002, and my process for drafting these ordinances was to look at municipalities similar to Waukegan, see what they had, and see whether those provisions could work in Waukegan. I assume that's what's been done here. However, I think that in particular, the 1,000-foot minimum distance between short-term rental homes doesn't fit in Waukegan. Actually, in addition to the group homes ordinance, which has this 1,000-foot provision, the only other ordinance in Waukegan I'm aware of that has a 1,000-foot provision, minimum provision, is our adult entertainment ordinance. So what that means is, we are putting short-term rental properties, which really are residential uses, on a par with strip clubs. I feel, at the very least, there should be an exception to the 1,000-foot minimum, where the property owner lives virtually next door, which is the case in my neighborhood. That takes care of any issues with regard to any problems there might be. The owner is right there, they know if there's something going on, and they can take care of it immediately. Corporation Counsel at the last committee meeting stated that short-term rental properties are essentially businesses operating in a residential zone. That is not really the case. They are still residential. Yes, money is being paid, but the same would be true in a long-term residential, rental property. Having them sit, having them occupied as short-term rentals is far superior to having them vacant, and I hope you'll take my comments into consideration when you're considering passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
My name's Tracy Rash. I'm a resident of Waukegan, and I am also here to weigh in on the proposed short-term rental ordinance as written. Of course, there should be regulations, but some of the proposed regulations would undermine property owners. The short-term rental properties I'm familiar with are well-maintained, they've been painted, landscaped, and are clearly cared for. The owners I know live in and care about the community, so they are extra conscientious. This cannot be said for the absent owners of many buildings in Waukegan, including those that have been vacant for years. The short-term rental property owners I know have strict rules for their renters. I know this because I've asked them. My understanding is that these short-term rentals bring a lot of people into our city, which helps local businesses. I also appreciate that they cater to Navy families. This is not my area of expertise, so I don't know how this typically works, but I would just think that the property owners who will be most effective would have been consulted on this ordinance. That would have shown goodwill to members of our community. I hope you will work with short-term rental property owners to find a workable solution and not drive business out of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Roberto Puig and Ms. Moore.
Pass.
You're going to pass?
I'm going to pass. I just, I came to support Steve and Todd and everybody's folks, so.
Okay. Points for that. Okay. The next group will be Joe Moglia, Rebecca Solano, Bill Powers, Kathy Levine, Rand Edwards, and Margaret Carrasco. Joe Moglia.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I'm a resident here in Waukegan, 1505 North Sheridan Road, here to talk about the short-term rental ordinance. But I would like to say, kudos on the snowflakes. Those are great. Well done. Bravo. Very nice, Miss Ogla. Anyway, so besides getting back to the short-term rental, with this, if there was a notification or discussion period, maybe if we have some more marketing on that so folks in town can understand that these things are coming up and not be a surprise to them. I think it was a surprise to some of us, so maybe that's just figuring out how to get the word out ahead of time. And then, I guess, a lot of these other folks have done a really fine job to kind of express our opinions, but I guess what I'm just going to say is, let's, let's start small and, and with as little regulation as possible. Maybe we just start with registering everybody or licensing, however it might go, and go for there. Go see where we are in six months to see if these short-term rentals, are they really an issue? Are we having parties? Once we have them licensed, we can identify who they are and really connect the two dots together. So maybe we, we start there and come back to add on later, once we know it is an actual issue. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Rebecca Solano?
Hello. Thank you so much for, for having audience time. It's nice to be able to be up here and speak. As a lifelong resident, I've actually never come to city council meeting to speak, so I'm glad to have this opportunity. My husband Mauricio and I own and operate a real estate investment business here in town, where we also actively engage with our community. We serve on several local boards, including the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, Waukegan, I'm on the Waukegan Public Library Board of Trustees, and the Waukegan Parks Foundation. Since 2009, we have renovated over 60 housing units here in Waukegan, as well- as well as we were full-time teachers in Waukegan Public Schools for ten years. Many of those properties that we renovated were extremely dilapidated. Many were vacant. Our latest project we just finished on Porter Street was a home, single-family home that had been vacant for twenty-two years, that we purchased directly from the homeowner, who didn't live there. He had inherited it. We invested over seventy-five thousand dollars of worth of capital improvements, and it will be sold to a new homeowner this Wednesday. In addition to those houses that we renovate, we do also hold a few as rental properties. We have some short-term, midterm, which is a phrase that hasn't really been addressed, and also long-term rental properties. I already did email city council with my comments. I do support having an ordinance, but like some of the previous speakers, I do think that the short-term rental ordinance should really mirror the long-term rental ordinance, and that, you know, just putting restrictions on short-term rental owner-operators, it's not going to benefit the, the city, because as a short-term rental operator, I want the best for my properties. I'm checking on my properties. I live in the area. If there ever is an issue, I'm talking to the people who are there. Same thing with the long-term rentals. Somebody mentioned about absentee landlords. I think that's a huge problem in the community, and I do think that many landlords and many properties have fallen to being very, you know, disrepair, and landlord, landlords aren't being held accountable. But on the other hand, short-term rental owners do invest a ton of money into our properties, and have, another property that I have was vacant for ten years, and we renovated it, put over a hundred thousand dollars' worth of improvements into that property, and have that as a, mostly as a midterm rental now, which a lot of our properties are, people stay for about three to six months. They're traveling healthcare workers. We have people who are at Vista, people who are at Condell, and then we also have a lot of people who are, come from the Navy for the boot camp graduations. Those are the short-term, but we have people who are stationed at the Navy base for three to six months.
Thank you. Bill Powers.
Thanks, Rebecca. Good evening. My name is Bill Powers. I'm with RTO Property. We own and manage three hundred and twenty-plus units and pay about nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in property taxes here in Lake County. Most of those are single-family homes, and most of those are in Waukegan. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed ordinance for Airbnb. Of the three hundred and thirty units that we own and manage, we have about fifty-four Airbnbs, exactly fifty-four right now, in Illinois and Florida. Most of those are in Libertyville, and over the course of the next six months, we'll be adding another eleven units in Libertyville. During the six years we've been operating Airbnbs in Libertyville, we've had over twenty thousand guests, and we've had a total of one complaint. About half of our short-term rental guests are military families coming to town to spend time with their sailors before they're deployed. We've had, we have Airbnbs next to million-dollar homes in Libertyville. We have Airbnbs next to three-million-dollar homes down in Florida. My point in telling you this is that Airbnbs are in all types of communities, including affluent communities, and they coexist without issues. When I was told about this pending ordinance, my first reaction was, great, I hope it passes. Limiting supply in Waukegan will only help our business in Libertyville. But when my wife and I started this business twelve years ago in Waukegan, we did it not only to support our family, but to help the communities we develop in, so I'm here to suggest to the council that you look at this ordinance more closely. Since we're the largest operator of Airbnbs in Libertyville, the village asked me for suggestions on codes they would consider for their own operation. They have yet to incorporate any of these suggestions into an ordinance because they do not see a need, but I can tell you that only one item in the proposed ordinance written by Waukegan as it's presented right now is, is one of those suggestions that I made to Libertyville. Again, after hosting twenty thousand guests, which are primarily military, I cannot tell you, I can tell you without question that they do not disturb neighborhoods. However, they do spend a lot of money and time in bars and restaurants. There's a significant impact. I, I often go into bars in Libertyville, and the first drink is always on the house because we send so many people. All right? I understand that some friends of the mayor, I think their names are Jack and Matty, do not like Airbnbs. I would suggest to the council that they consider what is best for the city and not the complaints of a few NIMBs. I think the city should call the village of Libertyville and speak with John and Heather and Donna, and ask them about their experiences in Libertyville, or in, with Airbnbs.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Kathy Levine.
Hello. My name is Kathy Levine. I'm at two five, two five three zero North Augusta Court in Wadsworth. I do live in a townhouse, so short-term proposed, the short-term rental proposal ordinance has me concerned. I live in a property that is touching the wall of the next property and is twenty feet from the next door neighbor. We choose to live in an area that's small. It, it benefits us, but if you, one of the restrictions on the new proposal is the thousand-foot distance. If you drop a circle with a thousand-foot radius on my house, that's over two hundred houses in my neighborhood that will be competing for one license. If you drop a radius circle of a thousand feet on other properties in Waukegan, that's almost four hundred to five hundred, depending on where you drop it. That's residents per one thousand square, one thousand feet limit. I think this is an absolute undue burden on the people who want to live and reside and have good ties to Waukegan. I think you have to reconsider this. It's just, it's a little bit outrageous. The other proposal in here is one hundred licenses, licenses for Airbnbs for the city, the size of Waukegan. There's nearly, I think it's sixty-eight thousand people on the last sentence, the last census, and you're asking that many people to have one hundred licenses. So of course, the larger companies are gonna get the licenses, and the people who live here are not. Who is, who's gonna get the license? I've been told that there's about seventy-four people, seventy-five maybe, that already have licenses, and we're proposing one hundred total. So, security cameras with ten-day recording devices is another issue. There's no way you can do, I mean, what are you recording? Driveways, front doors, back doors? What happens if an animal comes? Do you have to keep that for ten days? It's just another undue burden. If there's no problem, why are we creating undue regulations for one-night rentals? Parking reserve, parking in the proposed ordinance, it's one parking spot per bedroom per house, and I don't know about you, but when I'm renting an Airbnb, I'm coming with a group of people in a van. We're staying, we're going for a business, we're going for a wedding. We do not need four parking spots if it's a four-bedroom house. I understand you don't need to park on streets. There needs to be some parking, but one per bedroom seems a little outrageous. Also, it appears to me, and I am not an expert on this, but it appears to me you're gonna need one license for short-term rental and one license for a long-term rental. That means two fees, two inspections. Doesn't make sense. It should be rolled into one rental proposal. And my time is up. Thank you very much for your, all of your services.
Thank you. Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, council and community. You know, I've been asleep on this ordinance. I haven't been here in a few weeks, but you know what's funny to me is y'all fit to make them go through all of this, and y'all don't even do that to these liquor stores, to these gambling machines, to these nightclubs. Y'all are got to be the most unethical council that I've ever seen, and we haven't learned anything from this past election. People are tired of y'all trying to control them. It's disgusting. It's more slot machines and alcohol places in Waukegan than it is people. And now you're trying to dictate to people what they can do with their property. How? As they say, how many abandoned properties we got in the city? So instead of trying to find an ordinance for these short-term rentals, how about y'all find one for these landlords and make them do something with their property or sell it? But more bigger than that. In the last two months, we've had people hit, killed, drove off. But we got red light cameras. We writing tickets for people speeding, but we ain't caught not one person who done got hit by a car. Not one. So what we need the red light cameras for? Because when I drive through Libertyville, they not there. When I go through Mundeline, I don't see them. When I go out in Lake Forest, I don't see them. But I see them in Waukegan, North Chicago, and Zion, where we hurting at the most. And to correct you, dear, it ain't sixty thousand people in this city. It's about double that, because everybody don't fill out the census. You know why? Because we got elected officials who don't know how to educate their community on anything. But I want to ask you aldermen tonight, did all of y'all know that y'all are elected advocates for the people? Not for you. We not asking you to get up here and do what you wanna do. We asking you to get up here and speak on behalf of us, your constituents, the people that voted for you. It's like y'all get these seats and y'all get these titles, and it's never mind us. My grandmother always told me, don't forget where you come from. I've always known, just as well as you get up on that hot horse, God will snatch that horse so fast, so I encourage all you people to start realizing who we vote for, to start making sure the people that we vote for are competent, have the time and the intelligence to do the job that this entails, because.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We don't have that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Tonight, my words are in reference to agenda item six A. First of all, old business amendments to special events. As president of Fiestes Patrias, I'm formally putting you, Mayor, and Victor Felix Alderman, to cease and desist illegally using Fiestes Patrias name. The words are legally regished in the state of Illinois, and you, Taylor, and Victor are not authorized to use it in any way in reference to any of your events or any city documents, resolutions, or ordinance. Next, I recently sent, was given a photo, a photo in which it appeared to be, and people are saying, is that Bridges Secretary driving, doing errands, driving a city Tahoe truck during city time? Also, taxpayers want to know if our dollars are being spent for Bridges Secretary, the same person, suppose allegedly, is she a private beautician and for your hair pieces and makeup? And lastly, got a little branch of a Christmas tree here. For those persons who don't know, on October eighteenth, the city sent a check for twenty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars for a holiday Christmas tree, invoice number thirty-three forty-three, to T and G Global LLC in La Palma, California. Well, I did some research on the company. It's not no nursery, nursery company. It's a remodeling company. Mayor, doesn't your chief of staff, George Bridges, sitting right there in the corner, he personally, his personal business is a remodeling company? What the heck is going on here? Are we deceiving taxpayers and writing descriptions for checks for twenty-five thousand dollars and then maybe just stopping at Home Depot and picking up a tree because your tree last year was pitiful? Okay? You have a lot of explaining to do, because that's not a tree company. I sent them an email and everything, because I wanted to buy the same tree. Guess what? No tree. It needs to stop. Okay? Because if there's any truth to this, is this a way you're funding money? Is this you're disguising your laundry money? City tax dollars to pay for your personal remodels at your house? Are you doing remodels at your house? And George Bridges is doing remodels at his house for twenty-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the audience time, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a first and a second?
I'll make the first.
Second. Alderman Turner, and Alderman Newsom was the second. Is A through E okay for the consent agenda? Okay. Item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item B, a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five city council meeting schedule. Item C, a motion to approve vendor payments dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, totaling an amount of two million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and eight cents. Item D, a motion to approve and ratify the regular payroll dated November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, in a total amount of two million, twenty-six dollars, hundred and eight, two million, twenty-six hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents. And item E, a motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, in a total amount of forty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton. Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item five, reports and communication, treasurer's report. Dr. Schwab, did you just want to document it, or are you going to?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm Dr. Schwab. I'm a city treasurer. The monthly treasurer's report for October has been filed at our city clerk's office and is posted on the city's website. The report lists all of the funds the treasurer has for the city. At the bottom of the page, the first column of numbers is cash, about four million. The second column is the investments, one hundred and eighty-five million, ninety-five percent invested. The third is the total, the total balance. The reason for the cash is to have cash available when the city council votes to spend it. I'll repeat that. The reason for cash is to have cash available when the city council votes to spend it. Any questions, please call my office, eight four seven, eight five, eight five nine, twenty-five sixty-nine. That's eight four seven, five nine nine, twenty-five sixty-nine, or my cell, eight four seven, eight five six, nine one five four. I'll repeat that, eight four seven, eight five six, nine one five four. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Item six, under old business, this is the amendments to special events for provisions and fees of the city code of ordinances. This was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on October twenty-first, twenty-four, and considered by the city council on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. This matter was held over to the November eighteenth city council meeting. Can I have a first and a second to the motion?
So this is to talk about it or to pass it?
It's on the agenda.
So I, I would like to get rid of it. Can I put a motion to strike it?
I'll second that.
Just vote against it.
Can, can I?
You need to, you can't strike the ordinance. It's on the agenda. Either vote yes or no, or you, or you postpone it. Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Well, hold on, but was there, we don't have a first and a second.
I thought we had the first and the second.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's not, that's, I mean, that's not a, that's not a motion that's in order, so basically.
Can I have a first and a second to this motion?
I so move.
Alderman Bolton, second.
Second.
Alderman Hayes. Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
No.
Donahworth.
Nope.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
No.
Martinez.
No.
Felix.
No.
No.
Thank you. No's have it.
Thank you. I don't, what? Alderman Florian, did you, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Number seven, new business, an ordinance creating a Class F1 package beer, wine, and gasoline. Well, actually, let's, does anybody want to do an omnibus? We'd have to take G out because that was held over and put back to the community development. Okay. Yeah, we'll just do them separately then. Okay, item 7A, can I have a first and a second?
First.
Alderman Turner is the first, a second.
Second.
Alderman Hayes, an ordinance creating a Class F1 package. I'm sorry, what? Oh, I'm sorry, it was, I'm sorry. Okay, Alderman Donahworth, not Hayes, was the second on that. An ordinance creating a Class F1 package beer, wine, and gasoline sales liquor license for Drawn Gas Station LLC located at 2400 Grand Avenue. This was heard two weeks ago in community development. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, can I have a first and a second?
First.
Alderman Turner, a second.
Second.
Alderman Donahworth, this is an ordinance creating a Class A1 tavern with outside services, liquor license for chicken michet. I think that's supposed to be LLC located at 318 Belvedere Road. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Can we have questions or no?
Sorry, Alderman Florian?
Yeah, I see the applicant is here. I'm just curious, there were some things that came up during the committee, especially on page 30 of your application. You talk about, I'm sorry, 31. A limit of beers per person per purchase will be served. And then it says, we recommend a maximum of two, but you never filled in the information. And then it says cups of beer will not exceed ounces. We recommend 14 to 16 ounces, but you never filled that in. Did you correct all of that information with the city staff?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is there someone here that can, Sean's not here? I'm just curious if.
If you'd like to hold that over, you could.
Well, I mean, to be honest, I'm going to vote no because Alderman Bolton sent her ward and she said she's against it, so I'm just going to vote no, so I won't hold it over. But I just wanted that pointed out, that this application was really never completely finished. And I think that that's an important part of the process, which I talked about earlier tonight. So anyway.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Five to four, passes.
Item C, can I have a first and a second to this?
So move.
Second.
Alderman Martinez, second was Alderman Turner. An ordinance creating a Class C retail package sales liquor license for Diego's Mini Mart located at 1102 West Greenwood Avenue. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian?
I want to point out that this is almost directly across the street from NICASA, which is an organization that helps people dealing with substance abuse issues. I called and spoke to the director of NICASA. And it's also across the street from YCC, which is an organization I think we're all familiar with that helps struggling youth. And both organizations said they thought this was a bad location for a liquor license. So I just want to pass that information on. I don't know if anyone else talked to those individuals, but that was what I was told.
Ben Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. This is in my ward, excuse me, and I'm very familiar with the location, the neighborhood, and the organizations that Alderman Florian mentioned. I do want to point out that we have laws, legislation that stipulates who can be, who can purchase alcohol pertaining to YCC. So, and I spoke with the director there who said, hey, you know what? This might incentivize youth to, you know, drink, you know, well, any, any place you go that has alcohol might incentivize someone. I don't buy that. As for NICASA and the folks who are in recovery, in alcohol recovery, they are, they are adults and they are accountable for their own decisions. And we cannot limit business development and business growth and expansion because somebody might buy a legal product. And I'll tell you, you know, I haven't had a drink in over 31 years. And I'm not saying that I'm anything special, but I got to tell you, I wouldn't expect that anyone would limit someone's business because I might have a drink. And I go into bars, I don't have a drink, so, anyway. I'd like for this to pass. It's in my ward. I've met with the owners and I applaud them on their efforts and the tremendous, tremendous changes that you've made to the store. I really like it a lot, so thank you very much for that. Call for the vote.
Also, hang on, before we go, yes, I also spoke with the owners too. And you got to remember, this is a personal choice. This is a mini mart where people go in and they buy stuff. Normally, kids don't buy beer in there, okay? And if you have NICASA across the street, they're, they're being told not to do it. They're not being invited into this place, you know, for liquor. They said they're going to keep an eye on everything and that they haven't had any problems in the past. And I don't see them having any problems there. But you also have to realize they want to make money, you know, just like anybody else. And if you sell sandwiches and milk and whatever, and then you saw, you sell also beer, now you have another clientele that goes in there. And I don't say this is abused, so I would say yes.
Okay, any other questions to the motion? Alderman Newsome, did you have one? No, okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item D, can I have a first and a second?
So move.
Alderman Newsome, second. Alderman Turner, I'm sorry. This is a determination of a proposed aggregate tax levy for the tax year 2024 in amount of $34,598,158 and the total tax levy of $37,270,342, which is inclusive of the debt service. And this matter was heard in finance and purchasing. Any questions to the motion?
Any the first and the second?
Okay, I thought we, didn't we have a first and a second, wasn't it?
I was the second.
So move.
Okay. Okay, Alderman Newsome was first. Who was the second? Alderman Hayes. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item E, can I have a first and a second?
First.
First is Alderman Martinez, second.
So move.
Alderman Florian, this is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving a contract with Castro's Home Remodeling LLC for remodeling of the city's new 911 call answering dispatch center in amount not to exceed $300,000. Any questions to the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Turner?
All right, thank you very much. So I want to preface my statements by saying I'm very familiar with the Greater Waukegan Development Corporation and some of the contractors involved here. I have personal relationships with them. I have an exception to this, as I've stated before. This is a no bid contract that's being awarded just because. We have statutes pertaining to and requiring a bid process for government contracts, and this has not been adhered to. I don't know how this group was decided upon or who made the decision to award this contract. But I have been told that, you know, the justification or rationalization is that they're from Waukegan and they're a small business in Waukegan and so forth and so on. Well, there are other businesses, small businesses in, from Waukegan. And those folk too, as should everyone, have an opportunity to bid on a contract, on a government contract. There should be no favoritism or cutouts, special cutouts for one group or one individual, one corporation in regard, in this regard. And certainly, there aren't times where no bid contracts are justified. But in this case, I cannot in good conscience, in representing all of the, all of my constituents and sitting here on the council, representing the interests of the city, I cannot in good conscience vote for this. I'm not, this is not, I'm not pouring salt on anyone. I'm not. I'm just saying this process, we have a process to award contracts. That contract or that process has been circumvented. I don't like it. I think it's wrong, and I've got to vote no.
Wasn't there a question down there, Alderman?
Do we have, are they here?
Yes, we have. Who wants to come up?
Can, can they speak up?
Come on up.
Mayor, Council. Just a quick statement while they come up, and Director, please come up again. I want to make sure that I tell, sell everyone, it may not meet the definition of affluent, but we are rich in people, talent, and culture in this great city of Waukegan. I want to make sure that that is said. And our greatest asset leaves, Alderman, every morning. I've said that before. They leave to go work in other communities. This was an opportunity to ensure that we had our people work on our project. With that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Blanks.
Good evening. I was not expected to be speaking this evening, but I do want to address just a little bit of what Alderman Turner had mentioned. I did send an email earlier this afternoon, and I just wanted to state a few things that I had mentioned in that email. I won't be long. And I wanted to say, the request to waive competitive bidding for this project was not made lightly. We took into account the time-sensitive nature of this project as well as the additional community benefits of engaging local contractors who understand the needs of Waukegan. While we do not expect bid waiving to become a regular practice for the city, in this instance, it was deemed an appropriate measure to provide these contractors a chance to contribute meaningfully to a project that impacts the community in which they reside. This approach allows the city to support local minority and disadvantaged businesses in alignment with the program's mission to reinvest in the community and foster economic development. These contractors have shown their commitment to quality work and dedication to meeting the program's high standards as well. And I'm going to let them speak for themselves.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. You know, Keith, you know, I appreciate you being one of, you know, I live in your ward, sixth ward. And, you know, I certainly didn't expect that, you know, on your behalf, but I respect it. I just got to say, as I mentioned to you all when we revised this, that I am an immigrant. I came from Acapulco, Mexico when I was two years old. My parents crossed me through the border to have a better life because we did not have any money. Economy was very bad. My dad carried me in his arms and his shoulders until they were bruised and he couldn't carry me anymore. Somebody had to help him cross me over. And I think it's a good example, as an immigrant in Waukegan, that we are here to work for the better and be an example for others that you can do it and you can do it the right way. I just got my citizenship this past December, and I am very thankful for it. And this brings forth me saying that Waukegan is my home. Even though I was not born here or anything like that, you know, Waukegan is my number one home. And I am here to represent Waukegan because we are sick and tired of having other companies come to Waukegan that are not from Waukegan to do work here. And that's your tax dollars being spent for companies that are not being represented here in Waukegan. And I believe that if that were to say that you just mentioned, why haven't other companies stepped forward, minority-owned businesses stepped forward and helped out Waukegan the way we're trying to do it? This is not just us that we're trying to do it. Our plan is, in the long term, to form a union for Waukegan to be able to have all minority companies that are from Waukegan to work together in projects that are from the city. So it does not stop here just with us. There's other minority-owned businesses that are also in the group, women-owned businesses as well, that are going to be contributing to this project. And I can assure you that you guys are going to be happy with the end product. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Derek Nickerson. I'm the principal with this project with Mr. Castro. I just want to bring some facts this evening. With this project, we're going to employ 35 citizens of Waukegan. We also have.
Sorry, would you introduce who you are?
I have Derek Nickerson. I am the principal with Mr. Castro for this project. We are slated to employ 35 citizens of this city. We have strategic business partnerships with other corporations in the city. We're getting most of our products donated to us by, well, not donated, but we have a partnership with Home Depot in Waukegan that will be sourcing us most of our products for this project. We have another partnership with Sherwin-Williams, which will be providing all the painting and all the sanding materials for this project as well. This project is the beginning of a relationship with the city as well as seed money for us, bigger picture. We're looking to bring a learning center to Waukegan to help these young men and women of Waukegan learn the construction trades. Right now, the closest union school is located in Volo, which is about approximately 20 miles away from here. For an underserved community like Waukegan, it's hard for a young male or female to get to that place to get educated. We're talking about opening one of those right here in the city limits, at the old Belvedere Mall. Right, so this project is going towards seed money to help us open a learning center to help the citizens create more taxpayers, more homeowners, and more people to spend money within the city of Waukegan. So this is just the beginning. With that, we'll answer any questions that the council may have.
Those are noble goals. I appreciate your effort. Like I said, I'm not pouring salt on anyone. Certainly, I'm supportive of your program, if you want to call it that. I am supportive. What I'm speaking to is the lack of opportunity being provided to other minority contractors. There are dozens, dozens of contractors. I know one person directly across the street from me, contractor. He just did my floors and did my ceiling, and his guys did my roof. There are other people who deserve and are entitled to, I don't like that word entitlement, I don't use it very often, but they too are entitled to an opportunity to bid for the work. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you're going to do anything wrong or bad or you're bad people. Jeff and I go way back, way back. So, but what I'm saying, it's the process of selection for a government contract. That's what we should be focusing on, and that's what I'm speaking to. So I'm not, I'm totally am supportive of your efforts. And I hope you get the contract, but I think others should be able, allowed to bid on it too. And I would, I would ask that if the situation were reversed, if it was someone else here, I would want you to have an opportunity to bid. So, and why shouldn't we? You tell me why we shouldn't put this out to bid. What's the downside?
Well, they have been through the procurement process, which, they have been through the procurement process which allows them to go for government contracts, which a lot of construction companies don't have. But Alderman Felix wanted to say that.
Yes, the last thing I'll say really quick. This, the end goal is to have people like your neighbor to be able to do this. This, the end goal is to have people like your neighbor to be able to do this. These guys have worked so hard to be able to get those contracts. A lot of people don't know how to get these contracts, these government contracts. They work hard. They work together with an organization to make sure they're ready for these kind. Otherwise, if you say, don't, let's bid out, other people are not ready. We're going to have to bid out from someone that's coming out of, out of, out of our city. These guys are working hard. And this, that's, that's, I've been observing this since I got elected. How come people from our own city are not getting these contracts? It's because they're not ready. They don't go, you know, to find out how to get, get it done. These guys are doing that, and they're going to open up the opportunity for other people to do that.
No, that's, that's, you're, you're totally off-base with that, Victor. The other, other, like my neighbor who did, the other contractors, they were never made aware that there was a contract coming up. They didn't have that opportunity. That's one. Two, we don't limit people who can do contract work only to Waukegan. And that's a, that's a, that's so problematic, and it's one of the reasons that Waukegan is in the, the shape it is today, because we do this incestuous nepotism, where this is my friend, this is my cousin, this is my brother, I know him, I grew up with him. They're from Waukegan, and we're not going to include, how, how can, how can you say that someone from another city, from Park City, maybe they live in Park City, but they can't do work in Waukegan? We can't limit people to doing, getting government contracts based on where they reside. We can't.
Okay, well, I'm just going to go ahead and call for the vote on this. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item F, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
So that was Alderman Bolton, and who was the second?
I didn't, but I will. It was me first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Alderman Florian first, second was Alderman Bolton.
Yeah, I have a comment on that.
Okay.
And I mentioned this in, I mentioned this in committee. I apologize. This is, this requires a good faith waiver. Given professional services that Deegan provides and the knowledge, basically, this is not something that is amenable to competitive bidding for professional services. This is a defined exception, so a good faith waiver is not actually required for this. And this is a change order to an existing contract, anyway.
Yeah. This is actually, I believe, the addition of work, not, even though it's under the same thing, and it's, we're counting it as a change order, but we added more work in there. We got the first and the second. That was Florian and Bolton. This is a resolution approving change order number one by, I don't even think a good faith waiver should be in there.
It should.
Yeah, by a, or by, I'm going to say, change order number one for the Deegan Group for an environmental engineering at the former BRP site located at 200 East Seahorse Drive in an amount not to exceed $45,466.10, bringing the total contract amount to $79,226.10. Okay, roll call, please, ma'am.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item G has been held over and put back to the Community Development Committee, which will be on December 2nd, I believe. So item H, can I have a first and a second?
Still move.
Alderman Martinez, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alderman Guzman. And this is a resolution approving an agreement with Garland DBS. I just want to make sure everybody knows, just because the last name's Garland, it has nothing to do with the Public Works Director.
Sixty. Sixty.
An agreement with Garland DBS, Inc., for the 2024 Roof Replacement Project at Fire Station One through Omnia Partners in an amount not to exceed $50,017. And again, I just want to make that clear because somebody will eventually say that I'm giving this to a Public Works Director, which has nothing related to that. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, Alderperson's time.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, leaf pickup for the fifth ward. This week will tentatively be Wednesday and Thursday, but like the couple weeks ago, we've had rain, so it could be offset by a few days. I wanted to thank Public Works, Mr. Alonso, and Mr. Chris, and LRS. The last term that they were supposed to be in the fifth ward on the November 6th and 7th, they had to work over the weekend because we had water, rain, a couple days that week. So to the residents, just leave your leaves out there, and like the mayor referred earlier in her comments, that we'll make sure all the leaves are picked up before, hopefully before it snows. Second thing is, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, and see you next month.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Leaf pickup in the sixth ward is going to mirror that in the fifth ward, is scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday, the 20th and 21st. When we say that, you know, it's, it's, they're doing both wards, so they, you're going to start in the fifth, and they, you know, over two days. So it's not, they're going to be in the sixth ward on both days, or in the fifth ward on both days. Over two days, they're planning to get through both wards. Again, get your cur, your leaves out to the curb, don't spread them across the parkway, but please do not put them in the street because they will wash in down to the storm sewer and, and clog that up, and then we'll get flooding. So keep your leaves on the curb, at the curb line. Mrs. Carrasco mentioned about this Christmas tree that was purchased for $24,000-plus dollars, and I had a concern about that. It's just under the, the threshold where we need city council approval, and, and then it went to this renovation company or something, and I understand the check was kicked back. Mayor, can you speak to that? What's, 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 what about this Christmas tree check for $24,000 plus?
I'd be happy to speak about that. One of the things that we have had for years and years of complaints is that in every community, they have a wonderful Christmas tree, and we have the Charlie Brown Christmas tree. So what we did was, we looked at all the different costs of Christmas trees, and we decided to go with one that, like they use in malls, that cuts down on the labor for our Public Works Department. It is not a, like, artificial tree that you would buy. It's the type that they use in a mall that comes in pieces, and it, the lights are all assembled, and the ornaments are all in it. So this is something that we are making an investment in for years to come. It is not a one-year thing like we've had with some of our Christmas trees. Some of the places that we've bought our Christmas trees from were places that they're not really meant to be outdoor trees. And I feel that our community, our children in particular, are going to other communities to see Christmas lights, and we have never offered our children that chance to take the pride and joy in having the Christmas season that they should have right here in this city. I will not apologize for spending money on Christmas decorations. If you've noticed, we've got our snowflakes up. We need to make our, our community matter, and our children need to be proud of it. This tree is an 18-foot tree. I have not seen it assembled yet. Director Garland is working on it now. When we, will either decide to send it back, if it's not what my expectation is. This is a special company that makes them for this purpose, and like I said, it is the kind that you would see in, like, a mall. If you go into any mall and you see how they put those Christmas trees up so quickly, that's because they're actually pieces. There's not, you're not spending time decorating it, worrying about the lights, all that kind of thing. Right now, it is being treated, and I don't know how to say this nicely, but with any tree that you get, whether it's been the ones we've used in the past, we always have to worry about rodents checking the wiring. So right now, it is being sprayed with animal urine to make sure that the animals don't chew our electrical.
Great.
So I'm just going to be blunt about it. That's what's happening, to make sure that this tree is safe.
I, I hope it looks better than some of those trees in the past, and I hope that's the case.
Trees in the past have been sad.
So I understand, so did it go to this T L G company? Because, because information that I was given was that the check was rejected.
The check was not rejected. We sent the check, and then they called and said, we've never done business with the city of Waukegan, so we would like a wire transfer. So we stopped payment on the check. Contrary to what you put out on Facebook, the check did not bounce. We actually stopped payment on the check and sent them a wire transfer because they are not a vendor with the city of Waukegan. So that's the story on that.
They had to vet us, in other words. That's great. That's, that's good business. That's good business practice. All right, so as far as this, Mr. Cafam, as far as your, this art for the unique identity sculpture, I, I hear what you said, and I absolutely totally agree with you, but there's another element that, that, you know, was concerning me, and that is that this entire project didn't involve the Alderman until tonight, or it was mentioned before, but tonight we heard a discussion about it, but I, I think something of that magnitude pertaining to the entire city, the identity of the city, the Alderman should have been involved. We should have been the committee or established committee, or been on the committee, some of us, to, to choose the art. And, and we weren't involved at all, and, and now we're being asked to, to approve it. And on the Airbnb thing, and this is, man, this is so incredibly problematic, and Tom, to use your words, you're looking for a solution to a problem, and it doesn't exist. Several of these Airbnbs are in my neighborhood, one directly across the street from me, and got to tell you, no problems ever. If there's going to be a regulation, I would suggest we simply revise the existing rental property ordinance to say, including short-term rentals, and leave it at that. We don't need to create two different ordinances for two different categories of rentals, and ultimately, three, because there's a midterm rental thing too, right? So there's that. And then, again, no Ald, no, nobody reached out to me. It's in my, I mean, four, six, seven of them in my ward, nobody bothered to say, hey, Alderman, what do you think? Alderman, this is going to affect, we got to do better with communications. All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you all very much for your patience and attentions. Have a good night.
Alderman Donahworth.
Thank you. Yes, again, like I always try to do, is I like to thank the staff and employees of the city of Waukegan for constant contact with me all the time. You know, Chief of Staff, I can get ahold of, the Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, and all that area, of course. City Yards is a constant contact every day, and they take care of whatever I need to get taken care of, and the guys are on the street all the time. I try to stop by, say hi, and thank them for what they're doing, and, and they're out there. I want to say, we have this leaf pickup, and we had it today, and we'll have it tomorrow, and I think it's probably maybe going for one more day, and I've been assured that after LRS picks up the leaves, and if it goes beyond that, that the city of Waukegan will be out to pick up the leaves and make sure all the leaves are gone. I have several areas that are pretty heavy with oak trees, and guess what? I just went over on glendenning, and half of these trees haven't even fallen yet. So I made some calls today, and I spoke with people over there, and I was assured that all the leaves will be picked up, no matter how long they got to go. So I just want you to know that, they will be picked up. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and be safe, and, and also with these rentals, I'm in agreement with Alderman Turner on the rental license that we kind of have here. We just, you know, redo that and get that going. This thousand-foot thing needs to go, and we need to make it hospitable for everybody because, I mean, I'd love to have an Airbnb next to my house, you know? You know, and they're definitely out there, and I see them on the weekends. I see all kinds of cars, out-of-state licenses, and like, like I said, they're shopping here. They're buying here. They're eating here. And I just want to thank, thank all the guys out there for what they're doing, and it's been great, and we've had no complaints. So you guys are doing a great job, and please continue. And other than that, that's good. Thank you very much.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am a board member of the Waukegan Parks Foundation, which is a totally volunteer organization. By the way, I do not hold to elected positions. I just wanted to let everyone know, we had a meeting the other night, and the Carnegie is almost done. There's going to be a fundraiser shortly. The Historical Society will put together. It may not be till after the first of the year with the holidays coming up so quickly, but we were told Thursday that the project has been given an award for building excellence by the Great Lakes Construction Association. So that's pretty exciting. It's a whole consortium from the whole Great Lakes region, and it was presented and actually won this award, so that's pretty awesome. I have not been in it yet, but I've seen some pictures, and it looks fabulous. It's really exciting for our community that that's happening. I want to address a couple of things that were brought up in, in audience time about the short-term rentals. Someone said, you know, we haven't notified everyone. Well, it's hard to notify you if we don't even know who you are or where your properties are. We haven't really done that process yet. And, and someone alluded to the fact that there were only going to be 100 licenses, and 75 of them are already gone. Well, we haven't even issued any licenses yet, so no licenses are gone because there aren't any yet. We think there's about 75 operating in the community, but we really don't even know for sure about that. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. As Alderman Donahworth talked about, the leaf collection is the same for the seventh and eighth ward, so theoretically, today and tomorrow are our last days, but we'll see what happens with the rain from today and, and so on. But if you're having any issues, please reach out to me. I'll try to see if we can't get someone out. And I'd like to wish happy Thanksgiving to all those that celebrate. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At the risk of breaking my streak of passing, I am going to just address two quick points to those that came out tonight to speak about the art installation and the short-term rentals, and a few other individuals. I just want to say that I greatly appreciate you taking your time to come out here, but I'm also really grateful for your organized, thoughtful, and factually-supported positions that are made without name-calling, and without personally attacking members of the council. It's refreshing. So I, I just really appreciate your approach, and I think it carries a lot of credibility, and you capture everyone's attention. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Also, we have seemed to make a habit out of making motions during Alderman time. I have voiced my opposition to that several times. Hopefully, that doesn't happen tonight. It wastes time. But the process for making motions or proposals is to rally your support behind the scenes, submit whatever forms you need to, or discuss it with the mayor, the chief of staff, the staff members, to make sure that you have all your ducks in a row. What I am finding is that motions are made, they are not thought through. Corporation council, understandably, is scrambling to try to understand the context for the motion. It creates an argumentative environment during Alderman time and is ultimately unproductive. I, for one, after a long day at work, and then city council meeting, would like to leave. I understand that we have the business of the city to attend to, but I think it is unnecessary to debate motions during Alderman time. So I'm not making a motion to oppose motions during Alderman time. I am simply asking members of the council to refrain from doing so. I am simply asking members of the council to refrain from doing so if you're willing to hear me out and comply or abide or, you know, at least try to refrain from making motions. So that's it. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have a nice evening.
Alderman Bolton.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Attitude of gratitude to announce that Harvest Market in my ward on November twenty-fifth will be passing out turkeys between two and five o'clock at 502 Tenth Street. You must call and register. You just can't show up. I think they're giving away about three hundred. I will be out there. The number is (224) 480-4320 or just Google Harvest Market. And then Leaf Pickup for the first ward will be November twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth. I also will be supporting another organization that will be giving away Thanksgiving dinners and you can call me at (224) 607-8445. And I just wanna personally thank staff for all the hard work that they do, the, just the reports, the paperwork, the answering phone calls, all that, and especially Public Works for always picking up trash on the boulevards of Adam and Eighth, the mattresses, the furniture, the constant, just constant trash. So always working with me and giving it a great response. Thank you all.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening, though. I just wanna start off with, I'm kinda disappointed with some of the votes of the community at the home. I was elected and a lot of us newly-elected Aldermen were, were elected because they wanted something different, not the same pro-cro. And that's why I brought up all these ordinances that a lot of residents complained during Alderman, I mean through, during audience time. And I bring them up for the residents of Waukegan. So I am on top of that stuff, but as you can see, it doesn't move forward. But you know what? I did my job. You guys elected me to do something different. I'm doing something different and that's what I will always do, is something different. Not the same thing over and over again. Okay? And I was very disappointed in that. Speaking about the short-term rentals, I agree. It should not, I think it should be revised, but only once, included with the long-term rentals. But, I mean, to limit and give priority or whoever get those hundred licenses and then that's it? No, I don't think that's right. No, I mean, we're a democratic society and we're here to make money. And prosperous will win and whoever doesn't do a good job will lose. That's it, move on. Leaf Collection is a little bit backed up. Don't worry about it, they're gonna be there, so just give it some patience, cause I get called on that multiple, multiple times on that. So be patient. I also had my second ward meeting this weekend. I did one in English, that was a two-hour one, and then I also did one in Spanish, which was an hour. So both were well-attended. I wanna thank everybody who showed up. I wanna thank the mayor and for her answering questions and, I mean, they kept coming and I made sure I, I had every single resident of the second ward that was there. Made sure, even though a lot of them stayed quiet, I made sure to push them for their questions because, I mean, they'll, they'll stay quiet and then they'll leave and then be like, "Well, what about this? What about..." "No, no, no." I kept pushing. "You stayed quiet? No, no, no." "What, what is your question?" "No, no." To make sure their, their, their questions are being answered. And I thought it was a great turnout. I wanna say happy Thanksgiving. And hopefully everybody's ready for Black Friday, the deals are on, the day before Thanksgiving, the party nights, the largest bar night of the year. Have fun out there, stay safe, grab Ubers. And I'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
Alderman Martinez.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk and Council. Quickly, just a reminder that the leaf pickup continues for the third ward. Our next leaf pickup will be Monday, the twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. While driving around, I, I do notice that there's a lot of cars parked in front of the leaves. Please do not park your car there because the LRS truck aren't able to pick it up. So that's been a problem there, I've been getting phone calls. And I also had a phone call from one of constituents that said that they never picked up the leaves. And, you know, that, that is not true because the mere fact is that, again, the car was blocked. And also, I'd like my constituents to remind them that LRS, they do have a camera and so they see everything. And, and the leaves that they don't pick up, we are, we are notified of that. They're, they take pictures and so they let us know, so please be very careful when you complain about us. But again, please, you know, rake your, your leaves to the, to the front on the curb, not on the street. Very, very important that you do that. And with that also being said, I, I received many, many compliments from LRS. I do wanna thank Supervisor Steffi, who's always honest, she's dedicated. When I call, she answers my phone call and she pretty much resolves a lot of issues that I have. So they're doing a tremendous job and I, I wanna commend not only LRS, but also Chris Garland and his crew. So it, it is a work in progress and, and I, I think the way we're going, it, it does so that we're doing a much better job than we had last year. So I commend everyone. Also, I also want to let everyone know on my ward that their, their work still remains on the Stormline Replacement Pipe on Metropolitan Avenue and University. Given, given the weather permitting, give it maybe another week before the, the construction is completed as whole. I was able to talk to Chris Garland, the director, saying this is what he advised me of. So the process is working. Hopefully, you know, it is getting rainy outside, but give it a week. If, if it is gonna be more than a week, I will make sure that I contact my constituents and let them know where we're at with that. Okay? Also, I had the privilege of also attending the Veterans Day Parade and also the St. Disman's Eighteenth Annual Holiday Bazaar. It was a great way mingling with many of the residents and also bringing in the holiday season. So I, that was something I did on Sunday. As far as the short-term rentals, I think that we should have an open forum for all parties involved, cause we're hearing one side of the story. When you use words like clandestine in our, in our, in our meetings, then if you know what that means, that means sneaky. So that kinda raises a couple of flag, red flags for me. But I think throughout, there's many, many points that we have here. I've got many phone calls, many emails, and so therefore I think that we're, in order to proceed, I think that we should have a, like, open forum, where get everybody involved and let, let, let us communicate and let, let the public decide on how, you know, what's good and what's not. There's many pros and cons to that. So that's, that's how I, I see a good solution is that, to open it all up. Also, I am in a ward, you know, also the parking permits, please, if you are on the Brookside Avenue by the high school there, please make sure that you have parking permits. They are issuing tickets. If you need to get a parking permit, please go to the website. It is, it is, it is free. All you have to do is show proof that you are a resident of that area. But we are getting a lot of cars, we're getting all complaints from a lot of constituents saying that emergency vehicles can't get through, nobody can get through because these cars are parked there out there. And what they're doing is they're parked there and they're going to the school for eight hours. So that cannot be. So I support, you know, the, the parking permits, but again, if you need to get a parking permit, you know, you can call me and I'll give you directions on, on how to proceed with that. But it's very simple, you just go to the website, give them your information and you get a free parking permit. It's that simple. Okay? Also, finally, I just want to say that I am on the ward dealing with a lot of the homelessness, homelessness on Grand Avenue, it's been an ongoing issue. Also, dealing with, with a lot of the traffic area, the speeding that's going on. So I, I just wanna let you guys know that I'll be on it. I'll, if I get, I'm trying to find a resolution to all that, which is not simple, as you guys all know. But do know that I am out there, I am visible and I can always be contact. My phone number is (847) 390-2689. That is all for now. Just please ask, you guys be safe, enjoy this holiday season, let's all be mindful and let's all have a good, let's all be a good neighbor. And I wanna wish every one of my constituents, everyone here, a happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. A few announcements I wanna make, especially for Thanksgiving. Our community is really great. There's, there's three organizations that are having free Thanksgiving meals. One is for seniors, one is for general public and two are for general public. So I just wanna make sure people are, know about it. I, I had the experience last year of, you know, visiting someone, some people in the Light Lake ledge and they had the Juan Chuck Wagon's annual Thanksgiving meal. There's, there's some seniors that are alone this, this holiday season and you'd be surprised if you invite them to, to eat, they'll go. So I had the privilege of taking some seniors to the Juan Chuck Wagon's dinner, free dinner or free meal. They were so happy. They, you know, they haven't, they haven't done it in, we can do that this year. So on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, Mikey is having the Seventh Annual Thanksgiving for the seniors. Up to, I think, three hundred people or more show up every year. This is something that, you know, if, if you know people, invite them. It's at La Canoa. That's gonna be the, the address. You can look it up and, but it's gonna be fifty South Green Bay Road, Waukegan, Illinois, six zero zero eight five. Last year, you had your public servants serving the seniors and the seniors were dancing, having a great time. So this is the seventh time it's gonna, the Mikey's organizing this. And this is Mikey going around looking for sponsors to make this, this happen for the seniors. So it's from ten to one P M. So, you know, look it up, Mikey's Seventh Thanksgiving Dinner for the seniors. And this is for residents of Waukegan, Park City, North Chicago. That's on Wednesday. Thursday, Juan Chuck Wagon is gonna give free meals. You have to just go there. There's no carryout available, but you have to go there, you know, just pay for your drink and the meal is, is free. Big Ed's is also doing it on Thursday, twelve to four. So, you know, these are things that are available for those people that are, you know, are in need or, or, you know, don't, you know, need a meal for Thanksgiving. So those are some, some important announcements. Make sure you, you know, look up, look up the information and these are good things happening in our community from businesses that give back. Few things, I've been called, thank, thank you. People reach out to me and tell me about certain things and I wouldn't know those things if they, they didn't reach out to me. There, there are abandoned buses or buses that don't have license plates that are, that are expired. They're literally in our communities parked and they, you know, sometimes you have homeless people there, sometimes you have people, they, they just leave their buses there and roam around. Nothing against homeless, right? But you have, sometimes, there's resources for, for, for people and we should encourage to, you know, if you see something, let us know that we can let our co-compliance know. There's recently, I, I, I worked with Mr. Martinez here, Alderman Martinez, there was an abandoned truck or truck that's just sitting somewhere with people just in there smoking, people in there going in and out. These are the things that people call me about and then, you know, let us know that we can let our police know, let our, let our co-compliance know. There are, there are rules for these things, so we can help out our community, be safer. So if you guys see something, please let us know. Reach out to your Alderman. On Jackson and, uh, Jackson Court, there's three poles so far that have been hit. I don't know if the last, there's one just got hit last weekend. So that's a concern. So I'm gonna talk to the city staff to see what we can do there. So I just wanna make sure I mention that to the people that are wondering what's going on. I drove around with Chief of Staff Bridges and we actually went around to look at what, what, what we can do for parking. You know, there, we found, I showed Chief and some of my ideas and went around my ward and, and saw some, some things that need to be addressed. So thank you, Chief, for being, meeting with me and addressing some of these concerns. I make, it takes effort to get these things done, so no one's gonna come to you, an Alderman, and say, "What can we do for you?" Alderman needs to be out there, reaching out. Also, I am working on a project on improving communications in, in our city. I have talked to some of the Aldermen today. I have had a, a meeting already. Not everyone's just in Facebook. People want texts, voicemail, email, so I'm working on that and it's not expensive. Short-term rentals, I already sent my, my information to the city, to the staff like last week, I think. Of all the things that I wanted to strike that, I don't think makes sense. And a lot of you guys did address the things that don't make sense, you know? I think that for the most part, it should match our rentals, our rental licenses that we give out now. I do agree with having cameras there. I think it protects both parts, you know, the, the community and also the owner, cause in case, you never know what could happen. Besides that, for the most part, I agree on a fee for, for, in case you don't renew on time. And also a fee for applying for a rental. But everything else, you know, inspection, kinda like what we have as our, as our rental today, today for, for regular rentals. We haven't addressed it because we, the city wanted to see, see it develop and see if there's a need to, to put some kind of regulation. And, you know, we have it. We have the market for it, but we, we just gotta, I agree with a lot of you guys that are wanting to get rid of these things that don't make sense. We wanna help businesses coming into, help business coming into our city. Leaf pickup, whatever's missed, call me and see what we can do to finish the leaf pick-up, pickup. And I always, I always think of something else after I'm done. Yeah, there's always something else, but I forget. That's it, that's it for me. Thank you.
Doc Schwab, do you wanna tell?
Mayor, on a later, on a later note, our interim Finance Director, Don Schultz, it's his seventy-second birthday today. Don?
I just wanna remind people, because we, you saw his vote on the tax levy tonight. So contrary to all the rumors, we are doing a zero tax levy. So if your tax bill comes up and it's higher, don't come to the city and complain because we did not raise your taxes. Now, I'm not saying in the future we might not need to do that, but we have not done it in four years and I want you to know that if your tax bill goes up, please don't come and complain to these Aldermen because they voted tonight not to raise your levy.
It's a zero increase. It's not a zero tax levy.
Right, 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 right. Let me clarify that, yes. So just to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, we will see you December second. Thank you, everyone.
I need a vote out of here.
Jurn?
Some votes.
We've got Alderman Newsome, Second Alderman Martinez. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, have a good evening.